I did.
So you added your regulations fault?
I did. Here in the comments. It's twenty-five minutes.
Eight.
You try talking for a second?
Testing, testing. One, two, three.
Maybe that works. Okay. I think we're ready.
Ready or not.
Why is that?
Of course, that's okay. Like, no.
Morning, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'm to the Euclid Township Board of Supervisors. We're in the shop today, March third. Twenty-five. Having some technical difficulties, so I apologize if we can't hear this. Definitely guarantee that. Go ahead and jump into our business agenda for today. Number one is discussion of our National Community Survey and potential customer questions.
So we have, the township has talked about doing a survey following up from the comprehensive plan, and this year, we're talking about putting together a kind of a five-year strategic plan. And so a key component of that would be a community survey. So there's a company called Polco, P-O-L-C-O U.S. They're a national company, and they conduct what's called the National Community Survey. So in front of you, you've got five pages of what is the community survey. We would contract with Polco for them to administer the survey. They would send out a postcard to, there's two components. One, they develop scientifically significant, relevant sample size based on our population. And then they send out postcards to that sample for them to go online and complete the survey. If they don't respond, then they'll follow up with a paper survey similar to what you see here, specific for Euclid Township. And then there's a second component where we're able to take a link and put it on our website, social media, share out there for the public to respond to the survey. And as you can see, the survey kind of goes through a variety of things. Everything from rating different aspects of quality life in Euclid Township, characteristics, how safe or unsafe folks feel, how well of a job we do at making folks feel welcome, attracting diverse backgrounds, valuing and respecting residents from diverse backgrounds, taking care of vulnerable residents, to the services that we provide, the quality of services, how easy it is to do things here within township boundaries, categories of township's government performance around the value of services and confidence in government informing them. And so they'll, they'll put together, we'll get two reports. One would be the scientific, based on the scientific sample size, and then the other would be based off of kind of the broader community input and feedback that we would receive. And then as part of it, as part of that survey, they would benchmark us against similar-sized municipalities across the country, Pennsylvania. And then we could also pick two communities within Pennsylvania or the region, or frankly, across the United States, that we wanted to kind of benchmark ourselves against, you know, communities that we might look at and say, yeah, they're, they're really doing it really well in whatever township or whatever county, wherever. And they would, they would benchmark us against them. Then the other piece to this is that we also get half a page of custom questions. And so that would be, generally speaking, they, they, they say about six questions that you'd be able to include on, on our survey. And so kind of went through and we were thinking about focusing on communications and the recent change in track service. And so what I was hoping to do with kind of laying that groundwork was to talk about the community survey and any concerns or thoughts that you may have on the, on the survey in general. And then assuming that's something that we wanted to do, talk a little bit about the potential custom questions that drafted.
It's a lot of questions.
It is.
Do they estimate the taste of the Cleveland's for?
I think somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen minutes.
That's my only question. Like, actually, this is really good as far as establishing depth of our fix and each satisfaction with like the township's services and whatnot, but having just seen her the first time, what kind of information will we get from this panel on direct? How we move forward, like when we did the comprehensive plan, we did very small survey. But I know we had always said that the follow-up were specific things regarding our direct programming and stuff like that. So it doesn't really seem like we would be able to do that, this.
So the idea is that this would give us a good idea of areas that we need to focus on. So as an example, looking at, you know, like question seven, rate each of the following within the community. If the majority of folks thought that traffic flow on major streets was poor, right? Well, then that would, that would kind of direct our, our, our research, our thought process into, okay, well, what's going on there? Let's do a deep dive into, well, why would the majority of folks think that travel flow on major streets is a problem? Engage our traffic engineer, really look at it, and then come up with some, some actionable steps that we could take to, to improve that. And then the idea is, you know, we work on those things for two or three years, and then we do it again. And see, and then what, what's nice is because it's, because it's the same survey every two, three, five years, we're able to build those trends, see, okay, yeah, the things that we're doing are making improvements. We're getting better here, but we're slipping over here and start working on those areas.
I had a question, like will their, will the respondents' addresses be associated with their play?
Yes.
Because some of the questions. So will my dependent, we're doing it versus low nature way?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Would just be, go ahead.
Well, I, I think that's where, I think that's where the benefit of that scientific sample size really comes in. And, and again, I, I think we can then drill down on that. If the majority of respondents think that we're doing a poor job on snow removal, all right, well, let's take a look at it, you know, it's, and, and I, I think, I think we know where the problem areas are, like communities that may call and complain about their snow removal, but it's not a township street, right? The township doesn't address those things. We're able to, I think we'll be able to weed some of that out.
Like response, there's all the trash questions, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah.
So much feedback about trash. We only get six questions. I don't know if we should use them, like if this is a good time to revisit it, you know, the people have had. Or if that's the type of thing that it would be better to like, put a different question here, and then for the survey, I want our website just about trashed. You know, these are things that I've got a little bit, you know, though I saw in those.
And I, I will say, the intent is if we were to, if we were to go forward with this, we wouldn't, the survey wouldn't go out until June, right? So part of the trash idea was, all right, we've got six months under our belt, like at this point. But I, I see your point of maybe we don't focus on that right now. We've gotten a lot of feedback.
Put it on website so people can like, it just goes, is this the best vehicle? Or is there a more urgent question that we could send to the community?
Yeah.
But they're, they're good question, I mean, I'm definitely interested in the feedback. I just like maybe.
Understood.
This whole reaction.
Understood.
What's the cost of administering pay and providing administrative services?
Yeah, so for, for everything, between the administration of the survey and the results, the, the paper, the paper copy follow-up along with the custom benchmarking and the custom questions, it's, it's just over twenty-nine thousand dollars. So we budgeted thirty this year for it, so we've got it budgeted, but it's, it's not inexpensive, but I think, I, I think the, the results that we would get back are, are gonna be valuable.
And what was the expected response, like sample size later?
I think like three thousand. And then again, we, we then also get a link that we put up on our website and social media to try and get broader, yeah. But they don't, they don't mix those two results, like the scientific sample size is a separate report presentation.
What kind of time, very quickly, what do you think? Any decision by, considering the question that you're doing for?
So the, the questions we have, we have time on that. The, the actual survey, whether we want to do the survey or not, we were gonna, based on feedback from here, we were gonna potentially look to have it on the, on the next week's agenda as a, as an approval just for the contract with, with the company. And then, like I said, we can, we can nail down the, the questions probably by May.
Did we look at other companies that do this on there?
Yeah, so, you know, we could, we could certainly partner with like Westchester University or another company that can put together the survey. What Polco has is they have the National Community Survey, that, that brand. And so no one else, no one else does the National Community Survey. They're the only ones that are doing it kind of across the, across the country and using this, this standardized version. So whether you're in Denver, Colorado, or, you know, Stowe, Vermont, or Euclid, Pennsylvania, you've got the same survey.
One of us team, is that hard?
No, no.
All right. Any other little discussion, any follow-up comment?
Have you sure?
Your name?
Oh, Andy, Florida, hello, all right. Have you sure township residents are responding and not, if you're recording, you got somewhere or?
That, that's, that's part of the challenge with the, with kind of the link going out there and why it's a separate, it, it, it's a separate set of reports. The scientific sample size, we know that it's only going to Euclid residents. You know, there's, there's really no way of limiting that, limiting the responses on the broader survey to, to just Euclid residents.
So yeah, I guess we break the point of not moving links to an address you can tell to, I don't know, like the type of the impotentiary address or something, you need to capture that part, research the levels. Mechanism.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. It would be an interesting idea to, to have them think about, like, put in your address, oh, sorry, your address isn't in our community, you can't take a survey, but, yeah.
All right, we've been having one to know too, where you would discuss right to know and discuss.
So we wanted to, there, there was a recent change within the way the, the state law for right-to-know policies, and that is allowing agencies to refuse right-to-know requests from anonymous requesters. And so we've refreshed the policy, just kind of quickly walk you through it. This is based on the model policy from the, from the Right to Know Office, the, from, in the Commonwealth, so it's a lot of legalese in there. But, you know, it, it talks about the, starts off about the authority and scope. This policy does not, and, and the, the agency and the policy, when we talk about agency, does not apply to the Police Department. The Police Department has their own separate records officer and their own separate right-to-know policy. Sets out some different definitions around the Agency Open Records Officer and, and, or Business Day, what constitutes the Business Day. It excludes Saturdays and Sundays and when we're closed. Says that we maintain a, a public website, and a lot of the records that are commonly requested can be found on the website. And then it walks you through the process of submitting a request. We have an Agency Open Records Officer, which is Tara, and then our alternate Agency Open Records Officer is Katie. Despite Tara being here for the, her twenty-first year today, she's not been the rec, Open Records Officer for twenty-one years, although
Pretty close.
Yeah, pretty close. We would probably, we'll, we'll, we'll probably work with help now to establish a specific right-to-know email, so if Tara's on vacation, we're not losing things, and Tara's mailbox isn't getting bombarded with emails. Talks about the request can be, can be made on our, our request form or the uniform or request form that's posted on our website, provided by Open Records Office. And calculating the five days, we have five days to respond. Fact that it's calculated based on when we received the request that, that the next business day kind of constitutes day one. Verbal requests, we can, we can respond to as we, as we see fit. There's nothing that requires us to, and folks submitting verbal requests don't get the, the same remedies under the right-to-know law. There's also a provision in here that unless somebody specifically says it is for, it is a right-to-know request, we don't treat it as a right-to-know request, so somebody could send in an email saying, hey, I'm looking for information on the township's budget, unless they specifically say it's a right-to-know request. It, it doesn't count as one. And then we won't respond to anonymous requests. We have five days to respond, we can take an additional thirty, thirty days, thirty calendar days to respond if, if necessary. We can request more than thirty days if necessary, but the requester has to agree in writing to, to do that. Anything that we hold somebody else's record, or if they believe it's trade secrets, they have to, that third party has to have an opportunity to participate in the, in the response. We can, our response can be to grant access, deny or partially deny. The fees are consistent, the, the Right to Know Office in the Commonwealth establishes a, establishes a fee schedule, and so we're consistent with that, and then it walks you through the appeal process and going through mediation and our record retention policy that we follow, the Pennsylvania Historic, Historical and Historic and Museum Commission. They have a municipal records manual, we follow that, and then for additional right-to-know information, they can go to Open Records Office. So if there aren't any questions on that, our, our intent was to have that on the next, on Monday's business agenda, but just kind of walk through that. Again, the, the biggest change is that we would not, we would not accept anonymous requests.
Please, wherever you're receiving anonymous requests.
Um, no, there was the FOIA buddy that was going out to all the municipalities for a while, that apparently there was really no one on the receiving end of that request, which we ended up responding to anyway. I would say most of the time people put their information in, sometimes it's not a name, it's just a random email. But no, we don't get too many anonymous.
So, I guess, one question, yeah, is, if it's just me, um, you're gonna grant some agent task, is that a really, or is that? I would.
If, if there's no name.
Like if it said, uh, at Google.com, but then it just doesn't plus, but immediately anonymous.
I would probably consider that anonymous.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I think the, the standard is that we have to have the ability of establishing that it's an actual person requesting it.
I mean, it does say in the request, said submitted writing, using the Agency Request Form, which we have on our website, right? Is there a way to just make it so that you can't submit it blank name?
Yeah.
Like is it mandatory entry?
Anyone can fill out a paper copy as well and just leave it here, so there's nothing to make them fill it out. I mean, they could leave their name blank.
Would they know time of submission that they can't be, like, is there gonna be something on the board that says it's not, it's a must, probably feel?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it was funny, we got a right-to-know request, I think about trash, but it was anonymous to the extent there was no name, there was no email address, like there was absolutely zero way of, right?
Supposed to just to clarify, I think it was.
Right.
Wow, I have any insurance, pulling up the needs to the meeting. He said, Google.com? Moving on to the market, review and discuss zoning ordinance rewrite and, and, so we were.
Yeah, so I just wanted to walk through this a little bit with you. We've talked about doing an overall rewrite of our zoning ordinance. We reached out to the Chester County Planning Commission to, to see if they would help us with that, and they, they have agreed. And so they put together this, this scope of work. Tara and I had an opportunity to meet with them and talk about it. We were generally pretty pleased with it. Admittedly, I didn't bring my notes, but Tara did, so as I walk through this, she's gonna chime in with, with different areas where, where we talked about enhancing things, and so we're just looking for any, any feedback you may have. In terms of timing, I think we're still waiting to hear, timing-wise, when we would be able to start, but I think they were looking at late spring, early summer to, to kick off. We would create a task force made up of Township Planning Commission members, a representative from the Board of Supervisors, obviously Tara, and then we would be able to bring in other municipal boards, commissions or groups as we see appropriate and necessary. The county recommends a max of eight, really eight, members of the core task force, just to keep that manageable. The, the task force has a big job in that they need to read, like, read everything that's, that, that's gonna be given to them and have a good, solid understanding of how this really kind of reshapes or shapes the, the, the community. They would, they, they'd update it based off of, and, and make sure that our zoning is consistent with our adopted planning policies, including the comp plan. You know, address concerns that we have with our current zoning ordinance and promoting consistency with our official map. And then they'll also help us respond to input provided by the task force and at public meetings. They'll produce an updated revised zoning map. And then obviously comply with municipal, municipalities' planning code. Ultimately, everything would get codified into a single, into a single new set of zoning ordinances. They would work on some of the organization of it, in, in that they have some, some recommendations. We'd have our general provisions, definitions, they actually generally speak, do last, kind of working backwards. So draft everything and then figure out what needs to be, what needs to be defined. Looking at, at district boundaries and making any adjustments that, that may be necessary. And then splitting out, we'd have our district regulations as we do now, and then split out our supplementary regulations, which are currently in the, in the, in the general regulations, trying to make it a little more user-friendly and, and easier to understand. You know, some things that we're, we're looking at adding in include electric vehicle charging stations, accessory dwelling units, looking at short-term rentals in Airbnbs and warehouses and car washes and composting operations. I know we added solar, what else did we?
Parking, we wanted to look at, that's been a hot topic.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty much it.
We use a food truck?
Yeah, so there's a handful of ordinances that we were talking about that are not technically zoning ordinances. So I think we were gonna do a separate, I don't know if we were gonna do it under solicitation, or if we were gonna do a separate for food trucks, similar to like our nuisance plants and grass and that sort of stuff. They're separate from the zoning ordinance.
Can I have an addition to those two?
It's an ever-growing list.
I just wanna point out like a specific mechanism for us to review our, what we're assuming, to make sure that we are consistent with implementing our extremes policy, and I think there's gonna be spots throughout this meeting where that is gonna be rolling. So I don't know, we go through it, just transportation, ministry, rules, issues, I mean, consistent.
I think a lot of that'll probably end up in the subdivision ordinance as well, with design standards.
Yeah. I'm sure there's still things moving to.
There is, it's not in the marriage.
Well, and as part of that, potentially for twenty-six, certainly for twenty-seven, we're gonna be pursuing grant funding to develop an active transportation plan to wrap all of those things in and come up with actual recommendations on, these are the areas that we need to focus on and how to implement those things. And then just the, the remaining articles, non-conforming lots, using And then just the the remaining articles, nonperforming lots, uses structures and buildings, administration enforcement, zoning hearing, and miscellaneous.
I'm just reading as additional considerations, maybe it's inherent in. Uh, I'm saying the excess plot for our ordinance, we have.
That is something that we had talked about, but that did not make the list, so yes, that'll be something that we are addressing during that as well. Also overlay districts, a lot of things that were in the comp plan that we've not yet updated.
Yeah, and then the the additional considerations talks about some of those things. EV stations, the ADUs, short term rentals and Airbnbs. You know, it's funny and frustrating and interesting conversation. Like, we'll start talking about accessory dwelling units, and you just end up down this rabbit hole. Thirteen different rabbit holes of, well, what impact does it have on this, and what impact does it have on sewer, and what impact does it have on that? Those will be some interesting conversations.
It's a very overwhelming process, which is why we decided to do it all at once, and it's also a two year, it's also a two year process.
Car wash regulations is another one that's on there, lighting standards. Solar facilities, energy efficiency, lead certification, looking at incorporating all of those those things and and at the very least, having conversations around them. You know, they're not all things that may end up in the zoning ordinance, but there'll be good solid conversation dedicated to them to ultimately make that decision. Yeah, right, like, isn't there a limitation on drive-throughs? Is there something there?
No, there, I mean, there's different setbacks for, you know, gas stations have to be so many feet apart from each other in certain districts. You can't have outdoor, you can't have curbside service, like, to your car, pretty much, like, well, because at one point Sonic wanted to come in, and I guess there was, nobody wanted delivery to the car at that time. Now, I don't know that that's the same as curbside pickup. But that's something else we're gonna need to look at with all the DoorDash, Uber, and everything else. So, yes, we need to accommodate all the new trends that have occurred in the past five years as well. Under control for the most part, but yeah, we've adapted.
There would be, they they would, the planning commission would do twenty two work sessions to work through all of those, all of those different things, present materials that they prepared. They'd attend a public meeting for the planning commission, and then there would be a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors that that they would facilitate. And then they can do additional meetings or hearings as we as we want or need, so lots of opportunities there. You know, printed materials, they'll give us all sorts of maps and graphics. Public reviews and publication drafts, they'll provide a variety of different mapping services. One of the things that we talked about was the idea of especially as you go in and you make changes to zoning districts, of being able to create like three D models or images of what that actually looks like. It's one thing to read the text, but it's another thing to see it visually, and so they would they would work with us on those things. Really, a two year process from the month we kick off in month one to the public hearing and consideration of adoption is twenty three months. And it's, it's almost a steal. I mean, it's gonna cost us twenty seven thousand six hundred dollars and it is, it is, it is. You know, and they they would provide sixty percent in kind and sixty percent in kind grant, and so we would have forty percent cash. We budgeted, I think, forty thousand, forty five thousand dollars this year, and that twenty seven six would actually be spread over two years, so it's it's pretty good.
Obviously, like, the two year to a branch is not getting to address things that are one hand immediately. So I guess, just kind of curious, can talk them through, like, the town has some enclosures pending that have zoning implications and requests for changes. How does that fit in? I mean, it's obviously a different process to this, but they're all going towards the same destination, so how do we kind of rectify the immediate changes that might be under consideration versus an in-depth holistic located area? How do those two?
So that's a multifaceted answer. The first is any zoning changes that we would be making has to go to the county planning commission for their review and comment anyway. So any potential zoning changes, they would get to see. The other thing, and we we had this very conversation with them, the other thing that that they kind of said was look, the thing that's gonna derail this is if you're making a lot of changes while we're doing this. And so you know, a word here or there, minor change here or there, not a big deal, but once we kind of get going, they'd ask that unless it's a dire dire emergency, like, look, we're, we're gonna get there, let's, let's take that and fold it into into this to to have those conversations.
So how does it target into the late spring or summer matchup point?
There, there's really not a not an anticipated impact, we've had that conversation with them. They, they actually have that now, a draft to to get some feedback. Some informal feedback, kind of go from there.
Twenty thirteen. We, it was a two year pro, well, three year process, right after we updated the comp plan in two thousand and ten. We went through and updated the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. It was all done under the vision partnership grant.
Salda wasn't on the same time.
The Salda was done first, the zoning took a little longer with the historic portion of the ordinance.
So this is, so I update will sort of align with the comp, the twenty twenty month, which is like, it's been some years now.
Yes, so this is gonna take us right into the comp plan, planning for twenty third, at least, so that way we'll have updated zoning information to also be able to put into the comp plan or check off items from the previous conflict.
I mean, I know that we've kind of picked at things over the years, but
We've not discussed that yet.
I, off off the top of my head, I would say we do this, then we update the comp plan, and then we do solid up.
Thought ten years ahead, today. Definitely timing to start planning some things that we have discussed and had lessons learned or in the most, yeah, we don't have the agricultural zone, or institutional zone, there's so many districts that we don't have that.
We have agricultural zone. We have industrial also, we have rural agriculture and rural residential, which also has agriculture uses. There's agriculture uses in PIC as well.
Right, we want to just straighten on that. This is over, that's residential. Have some place where it has to be in the ones. See if that makes sense, we. Tiny public call.
I would say, I I appreciate that he said making models of what this code is, because I see so many times, making codes based on a perfect sketch that someone has, but then not really extending, oh, someone else who come here to visit, so I think it's refreshing to figure that out. All or all, you know, I know some of the task forces more, board, planning commission member, but if you want residents, non voting members or whatever, this is making it realize. I've read hundreds of resources, and some are rated, some are really worked out, I mean, understandable.
We are, we are looking for members for the planning commission.
All right, number four, discussion information sharing session with boards and commissions.
Uh, so we, we have our our very first information sharing session scheduled for different authorities, boards and commissions, April fourteenth or fifteenth, somewhere around there. I know that they are all very excited. And so you know, I kind of build it at to them as, and as as we've been going around to the different, to the different meetings, talking to them about it. You know, an opportunity for the board to share kind of the township's priorities and what's happening in the township, and then them to share their priorities and what they're working on for the year, and allow for some organic cross collaboration to happen along with you know, any adjustments that may need to be made. So I wasn't sure if you had any specifics that that you wanted to just generally talk about it. We'll, we'll have some dinner for everybody, because we're in a role right into our supervisors meeting. Just figure, I throw it on there, see if you had any thoughts or ideas that you wanna make sure are covered.
So we're gonna have each board kind of present what their
Yeah.
goals for the year.
Yeah. So like, I know Park and Rec is really excited to talk about the events that they wanna do in the parks for throughout the year.
I have a question. So for like the zoning hearing board or the planning commission, the zoning hearing board typically only meets when there's an application that they're voting, so I don't know that they're gonna have any ideas or what they wanna do, because they don't really have a choice of what they wanna do. The planning commission, again, I mean, they are making recommendations on land development plans and ordinances and things that are put in front of them, is there something that you would like for them to focus on? Or that I can relay to them of what they should be considering? Any feed, like, specific feedback that you would wanna hear from them? Because they're all very new, so I don't know that they know specifically what really goals.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely good feedback, that's been kind of years is to like increase the amount of education opportunities that are available, knowing there's some younger members that are worrying about the goal and growing into it. To me, the strength of this kind of event is really just these are committees that don't get to sit in the same room together, so like, I've been present for a few conversations where someone, this committee and this committee are like, oh, I didn't know you were working that, you know, like, we would love to do that in the park, and then like, all of a sudden, there's a collaboration between the EAC and parks or some other, so I just think it's important for all of the advisors to hear what the others are working on, and they think is important, and then you know, hopefully, they take some of that into the work that they do, and it's complementary. You know, we're all working towards the same climate vision. I just think it's important to be in there together and meet your neighbors and figure out what's going on in other meetings, it's hard to go to meetings, newer committee, or more meetings. But I don't think that there's a specific ask necessarily with the planning commission, I mean, knowing the kind of work that we had coming up with some of our heart redesign. Certainly, our zoning rewrite, I mean, these are just all things that would be impacted by the different committees. Just sharing that knowledge and what they make is important. Things that they've seen in Tom Ross, you know, their desk for consideration and how it might impact. That's not much of an answer, sorry.
It is, it gives me a little direction when they ask.
Where it is not, but it's just to remember each other. All right, we belong to number five, date on Rossy Farber, master.
Uh, so Katie and Kyle are gonna be our co-project managers for for this project, we had our kickoff meeting. We're gonna be expanding the size of the 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 steering committee a little bit, to include neighbors from Reaver Circle and Turnberry and Wyndham. We're also trying to get two high school students to join the 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 steering committee. One in Volvo Sports, one that's not involved with sports. We, uh, we're also including LYA and Representative from Dark to be on that steering committee. They are, the the team is currently working on we'll have an article in the in the, we should have an article in the upcoming newsletter, they're also working on preparing a survey, and they sent us home with some homework around thinking about the current Lionville Park and what we really like about it, and what amenities we wish were there. What works really well, what improvements we would like to see. Different things like that, so that's kind of an update there, if there's any feedback that that you may have on on Lionville Park or the master plan, let us know, and we're excited to get started.
What was the next date?
No, no, we were no, we were working on, we wanted to expand the the committee, get more people on there, and then Katie and Kyle would kind of brief them on what the plan is moving forward and and go from there. There was talk, I think, about them potentially attending, like, if we did, and their Park and Rec was talking about maybe doing Easter egg hunts, or we're having, we're we're getting ready, we're putting together the plans for the ribbon cutting on the Happy Days Park the end of April, and so there was talk about potentially the consultants attending one of those events. So kind of as a pop up, talk to people about the parks and what they're looking for and So kind of as a pop-up, talk to people about the parks and what they're looking for and different, different pieces there.
So will there be public surveys associated, like I'm not listening.
There's gonna be a lot of public surveys, um, so they are planning on getting into the schools to talk to kids in high school and middle school, um, they are, we're gonna have surveys that we can put on our website and in our newsletter and send out, um, there will have QR codes that we can put up in our parks and then they're planning on attending at least one function, again, whether that's, uh, there was talk about maybe even going to opening day for L Y A, um, and being able to just be there to survey folks, um, to talk about ideas. I don't know. You know, one of the things that they are gonna work on, uh, as part of this is benchmarking us for, um, for our field needs and we pointed them to, uh, to what's in the comp plan. We have a, a nice table there that talks about our parks' needs and our recreation facilities, so they're gonna look at that and kind of brush that off, um, but we'll, we'll. That's right, that's right. And, and, and again, right, like, the thing that we've emphasized to them is, I think to your point, maybe of depending on who you talk to depends on the status of the need and the township's focus is our residents' needs. Um, and, right, right. Um, really making sure that our residents' recreation needs are, are met and, and targeted. I, I don't know that they're gonna have anything ready to go by the time community day rolls around, but if they do, um, I know that they would be open to attending that and having a table or something to, to be able to get feedback on plans and different things like that.
I, I'll make sure that we talk, you know, online somewhere, I just wanna make sure, it sounds like we have school age kids and recreation where we're in. Cover a lot of our older people in our community, really young people, you know, parents of small children, make sure that we get all ages of residents, you know, just.
Yeah.
Having attended the different groups and this group specifically, like in my opinion, really emphasize, so had examples of private projects for later in schools and talking to kids. One example specifically was a young child who was involved at the beginning of the park design and then came back, like here's there for grand opening, like it was just, I mean, yeah, it really involves these and gets very important. Other one was like a child design, then draw like they might, they actually build lesbian, what time, you know, and then like I so excited for this process, yeah, I want three kids, I don't mention the control of this.
Yeah.
After kids that came, um, gave me back the picture of my. Really new kids too.
Yeah. To your point about the older population and maybe the, the harder to reach population, we're looking on a completely separate topic. We're looking at trying to improve the communication to residents around projects. So like as we, as we're looking to do the work on Taylor Road, we're looking at, at sending postcards out, um. We could look to do something similar to that, um, when we launch the survey. Hey, you know, go send out nineteen thousand postcards and.
Any follow-up? All right, number six, business meeting agenda review. I feel like a lot of this will kind of already get screwed over.
Yeah, uh, so on this, we would have on, posed on the agenda, we have uh, the drug testing policy appendix to the collective bargaining agreement with the police association. We finally got that arbitration award. However, since it's part of the collective bargaining agreement, we want the board to take official action to adopt that policy. Um, we have the contract for the national community survey, we have a bid award for the Taylor Road paving project. Uh, we have two budget supplements, one, we received a fifty thousand dollar grant, uh, I'll see Sue Morgan from Representative Otten's offices here and, um, Representative Otten was, was the person that got us that fifty thousand dollars, uh, and so, um, we're very appreciative, but we, we got that grant, so that's establishing the budget there. Euclid ambulance is looking for an additional capital contribution, uh, to help on the financing of, um, of a new ambulance that they have the tune of fifty-five thousand dollars. They had requested that last year. We had said that we were open to that, um, but it wasn't part of the budget, so they're gonna come and talk to us about that and then we have that, uh, on there. For a number of resolutions, the twenty twenty-five tax duplicate, the right to know policy, contractor registration and fee schedule update, that is a result of some discussions around the home improvement contractor, um, act. Two ordinances, one, uh, stop sign at Allen and Glendale, and then the second is repealing, um, uh, defunct chapter in our ordinances, um, potentially we will have, uh, land development submission for Love Car Wash at eight fifty North Pottstown Pike. We'll have acknowledgement of, uh, conditional use plan, hearing extension from Rockwell Downingtown LLC. They've extended, uh, the need to have a hearing to June second, um, and then, uh, conditional use decision for Laborio Lovers LLC self-storage at three thirty-nine West Euclid. We may have some additional things around some personnel actions, uh, we may have, um, some additions for, uh, potentially some purchases, we're working out whether we can use a state contract to, to get some, some material, um. Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, for today's meeting, is there any general public comment? That will give your resolution to her. One bigger, no, thank you, everybody.